I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I guess we need to approve the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes.
All the paper? Okay. And we do the bill bills for September. So you have to look back at this now. Alright.
I'm not sure. It's a kid.
All the paper? Yep, okay. Okay, I guess we're gonna talk about. So Kay is here and he's agreed to step down. We want to thank him for his service. He's been doing this a long time. And he had a little request as we were talking about this last week. That it would be easier for him to step down if Allen can take his place. I think Allen's a good guy. I think that's a good idea. We've been debating on that for a while. And the reason why I feel like that's okay is because Allen's been a member of the community for a long time. He served the community a lot, yeah, most of his life. He knows a lot of the people here. He's good at community service and those sort of things. And he's not afraid to share. Anyways, I think it's a good pick. So we're gonna go ahead and put Allen in, in place of Kay Krenman's place. And we'll go ahead and do that, I think. I think that's alright.
So you nominate?
I just know, I need to ask you.
Okay.
Well, she has some.
Okay.
How long's he been in?
Long time, I think.
So I found on the city council, he was put in April 8th, 1999. As far as the maintenance, the oldest record I found was 1987. But I have a feeling it was longer than that.
I'm just curious, how long he was in, well, Horace Barnhart was still in on the council?
Uh huh.
Or on the maintenance.
1987?
A long time, that's what we know.
Back in the 1900s?
You might have no rest.
He deserves a rest.
Well, we're thankful for your service. So what's the proper way to do it?
So you nominate Allen for the council position, and council has to confirm it.
Okay, so I nominate Allen Krenman for the council position. I guess all the paper? Okay, I guess that works. So I guess we're gonna say thanks and have you step down and have Allen come up here?
Where I know.
Okay.
The bell needs to ring off the clock.
Thank you, Kay. Don't go anywhere. It looks like there's pie.
We got mixed pie. So how are you?
So you can't leave. Don't leave the building.
Kay, can you step right there?
Got my move, Kay?
No, you're okay.
Kay.
No.
I have a problem here.
Kay, no.
Kay.
Put some closer just by.
And do we do that then?
Yeah, you got it, yeah.
Right here, move. So I can keep track of it.
So take the chair?
I guess I always got it all before you.
You have to.
Okay, let me see.
Sorry, I stand over here so you can read it too. Get your old man flask on. Okay, read it after me. I
Allen Krenman.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
Or affirm
Or affirm
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
I will support the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of Idaho
And the Constitution of the State of Idaho
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of councilman of the City of Bezos.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of councilman of the City of Bezos.
To the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Move in.
You don't want my then, you know, you don't do it. Now I can beat ya, right? Bossy around.
Now you're part of the problem.
Yeah. Now you can be hated like the rest of us.
Alright, thanks. Ordinance 136B for FY 2024-25.
Yeah, that's per budget. So it's in your folder. And I gave a copy to everybody, so you can see what it is. It's going out of order.
That's okay.
Look, I even gave you a Joe Biden note.
Some people like him.
I'm just saying. Just saying.
So any questions on your budget ordinance? On that, we have to do it to a motion to approve it when we go to require previous. And that's a real call.
So what exactly is this for?
That's just the finalized budget numbers, like the full year budget. So this is each fund totaled up and what we should bring in. And then the total amount.
Slip a pill down. You're killing it.
So somebody just needs to make a motion. He wrote that, right? Oh, they make a motion, okay.
Okay, I move to, I didn't even know to pass ordinance 136B.
And we don't require previous.
And we waive all required previous.
All the paper?
Yes, if I roll.
That was real cold.
Okay.
We have to speak for us.
You approve?
Yeah.
I guess I do.
You guess you approve? You approve? All eyes on you.
I have.
You have no idea.
I have no idea.
I approve this one, okay?
You're welcome. He is part of the problem.
It's always a good idea to read this stuff. Okay.
I mean, it was all blowed for, I mean, it's just blowed in the camp. What is on the easements?
The easements from Garrett.
Well, so that one, I misunderstood. I thought you were discussing the right of ways and things against my two ordinance. So I missed, anyways, I did not have that much to do, so we'll just table that and go the next one. And then Robin and I have talked about it, you know, a little more often. They had a meeting to make sure we're on the same page.
With a list.
Okay.
An amendment to ordinance number 86, did you do that?
Which I thought you were gonna tell.
I don't know how to do that. Okay, this doesn't go on my bag. Yeah.
Ordinance number 86, put it in the security closet.
Yeah, so we just tabled that. So then the next thing is the resolution for disposal of all those boxes over there.
So that's all old records and things like that. It's, how old are they?
The oldest is 84 to 85. There's kind of a gap in the years. So I think what happened is somebody hid them from themselves. So they were pretty buried.
Okay, so what we're looking to do is to dispose of all those old, that old paperwork, to get rid of it.
Do they need to look at them? Just trust me?
So what's the best way to dispose of that?
Well, probably shred it, if you can.
What about a burn pile?
Yeah, paper takes forever to burn. And then if you don't have it all gone, I mean, it's public records, so it's not like you're doing health records or something. I mean, it's all open anyway, but I wouldn't. And you can take it to go in landfill. I would prefer to say shred it, but that's gonna cost you a couple, 300 bucks.
Yeah.
Or a lot of time feeding a shredder.
Yeah.
If it's too expensive, like I said, it's all public records, so it's not confidential stuff.
I have a shredder.
That's a lot.
We do have somebody that still needs four hours of community service.
That is true.
If she ever shows up.
Did she show up?
We could say that for community service, that's a good idea. I know somebody else who gets community service.
Just better get the shredder.
Okay.
They're thrown over there.
And if it's too expensive, like I said, it's all public records, so it's not like it's confidential. So it's probably, yes, it's probably a huge issue.
Okay.
So you just need to do a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay.
Can we get one to the resolution?
All the paper? Okay, alright, we'll do that. New podium for city council meetings.
I'll let Brian talk about that.
Okay.
So in, as I've been going around to some of the other cities and seeing their city hall, I've noticed that a lot of them have, instead of a table that they sit all around and look at each other, they, they face
They face the people.
They face the people that have come. And then I think, sometimes it's hard, even like, I'm sitting here in the back. I have a really hard time hearing what's happening. And I, I proposed to Robin that maybe this coming year that we should find a way of making narrower stands that everybody could sit behind and face us as you talk and make your motions.
Okay, I think that's a good idea.
Just a thought.
I kind of volunteered, maybe the mayor services and his. My suggestion was maybe find an old tree, like the tollens over there, that Mike could go through your middle. That we could slab and I could do some welding work and put some legs under it. Maybe make a right angle bench up there that you could all sit behind. It wouldn't have to be very wide, just something that you could have your paperwork on. Just a, just a thought. That table, I've looked at it several times. It's kind of, I don't know, you've all leaned on it.
But it is not very like.
It is not very stable. And I've tried to reorient it into the room, trying to make it so that everybody can sit behind it. And it's, I don't think that's, it's not a doable thing with that table. I just, so I just threw it out there. Robin liked the idea. So whatever you think. Just as a matter of discussion.
Doesn't bother anybody?
Well, I think for city council, they have, that's what they do is they face everybody there.
So we all.
That way the voices come from out, so the backs aren't. Except we're limited by space, it looks like in here.
And maybe all, we do like a U shape.
Most of them have to perch at the front.
There's a really cool desk, have stores that I'd love to bring out.
So we'll ask. Okay, so that's the.
Most of them, I've dealt with a lot of city councils, 30 to 40. And most of them are a crescent shape or a U shape.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I mean, what you have here, the size, it's probably more advantageous to do a U shape.
Yeah.
That way you have, you know, you actually can actually sit Garrett at the table, two, three across the back, two on the sides. And that way you'd have, be able to have Garrett at the table with you guys. And it just, I think it'd be a better fit here for him here. And you could still make it out of, you know, slab wood and make it nice and holly or think the top.
Okay, yeah, I think that's a good idea. So maybe we'll work with that.
Put our hand for incident.
Okay. Alright, so next topic is trailer living.
Those are the amendments you've asked here, I guess, for discussion, anyway, there's problems with everybody. Those are just what you talked about last month. You'd have to have it as an action item if you want to add those things, but it added the permission from city council. So the underlying part would be the new stuff from the ordinance you already have. So that would give the council the ability to give a, you know, permission for something longer than the 14 days that you got there. I didn't put any guidelines as to why or when. I think you might be wanting to kind of like leave that open. But then it also redefined or helped define that it's 14 days regardless if it's one or two different parcels to stop, you know, an individual from necessarily moving around to get around the 14 days.
So I think there's some people that are a little confused. They think that we just come up with this ordinance recently, but it's been around for quite a while.
Yeah, since about 2020, I think it was.
And it's usually the neighbors that make the fuss and let us know. So it's not like we're searching out, you know, to be mean to anybody. It's usually the neighbors that say something. So, Kay, yeah, we just didn't come up with this one. It's been there, but we're trying to enforce them. Kay, anybody have any questions?
No, but I think this is why they're here.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. Because my landlord's got this letter stating that there was somebody living in my camp trailer in front of my house that nobody's living in, the slide out, sorry, I mean, out.
Okay.
And I didn't get the letter. It went to my landlord.
That's because it's the property owner.
But I still got, should have gotten a letter when I'm the one living there, not just my landlord's. I should have gotten one as well.
It's the property owner that's responsible.
So your landlord should have told you, given you the letter.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, no. But it still should have been sent to me as well.
Yeah, the problem is with the city for record keeping. If you're trying to find something, they only have the ability to find the owner because that's through the county records. So they don't necessarily have the ability to find out whose rental property.
They do when they, I'm paying the utilities and they don't.
But that's why everything almost falls back to the record owner. Because that's something they know they can find, because that's through the county property tax records. So that's why the ordinance is always typically go to the owner, those letters for notice. Because that's something you know you can find. Because sometimes you can't find the record information.
Well, and I understand that they may not be able to find the renter's information, however, the utilities are in my name, and whether that's the case or not, I should be getting some kind of notification. If my landlord hadn't come up and told me this, I wouldn't know anything about it. And I don't know who's saying there's someone living in my trailer because there's been no one living in my trailer the entire time I've lived in that, at that address. My trailer's parked down the front of the, and it's. No, it's right next to the apartments.
Right behind the apartments.
East of the apartment.
Old Butler House. You did wrong enough to know the Butler House.
So it's, it's been a little bit of a problem lately with people living in their campers and moving around, so.
And sometimes it's hard to know, so like ultimately we just need you to say, I don't know who's living there.
Okay, is there a way that the city council can notify them so that we know? Because I'm fortunate enough that my landlord come and told me this.
I think if, if it was a problem, Brian probably would have come and visited you too, or somebody.
Well, and ultimately, the, what I was trying to say is really, the way the ordinance is written is the property owner is the one that gets the.
Yeah.
But then maybe that needs to be amended so that if someone else is living in that property, they are also notified. Whether it be a notice on their door, mail.
I guess to me, that's up to the property, like they're renting it out, that's up to them to say, hey, do you have somebody living in the trailer? As a landlord, right?
Well, yes, but also as a city council, you should be notifying the people that are living within the city. Well, isn't that kind of what Brian has been doing, is trying to notify, how don't you, Brian?
Well, he typically write a letter to the owner.
And I think part of the problem is, the last couple of months, there's been some people that are abusing that system and have caused some troubles that may be pointing fingers back and saying, hey, look at this trailer, look at this trailer.
Yeah.
And so we can't always be, you know, right there. We have to assume if somebody's gonna complain that, there's a complaint, we have to follow up with it.
So, and no offense, but if I complained about the more than 40 trailers that are parked around this city, then something's gonna get done?
We're trying.
I mean, I'm not.
We're trying to be rude. I'm just asking the question. No, we really are trying.
If people are living in them, then the ordinance gets that, against that. But if it's a camp trailer that's parked, that's part of the property owners, that's, it's not a problem to park a trailer. But if somebody's living there, that's the problem.
Okay, but that's what I'm saying. Where would they get the idea that someone is living? And just for me, in my particular trailer that has two slide outs that are not out, it's not even leveled.
Sometimes it is hard to know, like.
You know?
I know somebody else that got a letter too and they had called and they're like, well, our kids do stay at night in there once in a while, so, you know, like, sometimes the stairs are out or there's power to it or whatever. I don't know.
Yeah, well, my trailer's loaded in. Yeah. Other way, so it doesn't ruin the batteries. Steps are out because we have stuff that we store out there, like boxes and stuff for my local business, so.
I think, I think what will work out is Brian made.
Well, and, you know, we've talked about this and I kind of asked one time, like, what's better? Like a letter or going and talking to somebody? And kind of sort of what I thought is a letter is best because I can kind of show that I did tell you. Like if it continues to be a problem.
There's, there's some places that has been a problem for a long time.
And I understand that. I've lived here a lot of my life, so.
Okay, I want the way you resolve that. You send them certified letter. The next time you showed up, you cite them. Because they don't care until they get that citation. And that's how you resolve the issue. Other than that, you can play this game forever.
Yeah. And not just the homeowner, I mean, the homeowner, but if you know who's living there.
Yeah.
Because I know you guys were looking at changing how the billing is for the.
Well, technically, like, the utility bill is supposed to be in the owner's name too. I talked to you about that. I don't know why. I mean, I've heard your story. I know what your extension was, but that really should have never been done either.
Like, to me, that's an issue. I mean, just, not to be rude, but it's an issue where if I'm paying the landlord, the landlord doesn't, in the water bill, my water gets shut off.
I went.
But I've already come in. I mean.
When we first came out here.
Yeah, and I get that.
Okay, we'll try to resolve that.
Larry has it.
So was the issue people living in, in their camper on, say, on the right of way, or is it?
No, just in their yard. Living in their trailer in their yard.
You had that letter with one quiz, had three different trailers that were living in there, still living in at least.
Yeah, we're working at it.
Yeah.
We're working at it.
I mean, you were part of writing the ordinance?
Yes, I was.
Yeah, but I mean, I didn't, I didn't know if he was addressing trailers sitting on the right of way.
No, just people living in them.
Yeah, the ordinance just says that people who are residing, living in the trailer for more than 14 days. And I'm glad to hear that they did, or you're looking at amending that, that there might be extenuating circumstances.
And there is sometimes.
For mine, you know, I had to take care of my dad.
Yeah.
And I was down here, I could have brought my trailer down and stayed in it, but I was there for three or four months.
I think the point is, is like, if someone comes and says, hey, you know, your circumstance, parents, family member, something happens, they need somewhere to be for a short period of time, which could be 10 days, a month, two months.
Right.
You just let the city council know, and usually, really, it's not that big a deal. But when it becomes months on end and years, that's a whole different story.
Or several.
So.
Yes, several years.
So that's what we're trying, and, and there has been people that come in. Well, last, last meeting, somebody come in, asked for an extension on time, and we're like, okay, but by this time, let's, let's make sure this moves on because it's been a problem.
Right.
And it's gone, and that's okay. It's fixed. It's solved.
Well, I think her landlord is actually one of the ones, why that was written was because her landlord moved a bunch of trailers in along that property and had a bunch of people living in there.
Really?
Along with the person out here on the Goshen Highway there. So that was part of the reason is, it's not just the one or two. I mean, it is, but it's to keep moving five or six onto a two acre lot and charging rent.
Which is understandable.
Yeah, that's what they're trying to.
Any other questions or comments? No? Okay, so we're good.
At least you gotta come for pie.
Yeah.
It's a pie night.
No, I just, you know, like I said, I just wanted to clarify why I wasn't notified when the utilities, for example, are in my name. So someone knew that I was living there.
I think we'll take that into consideration in the next ones.
Yes.
That's not always like, I think, though, is it? If it was for the owners. Is there a specific?
Even a notice on the door.
Yeah.
That lets them know.
What about the trailer registration too? If someone lettered to go to the trailer registration too?
Yeah, that's true.
If it's registered.
If it's registered.
She had mentioned the right of ways too. That's a whole other conversation, and the right of ways are gonna be a subject coming up. I think that's one of the ones that we tabled. So just, just keep in mind that right of ways are gonna be an issue. So at some point, and.
Okay. Clear with you on our loss. So I'm gonna jump to the bottom real quick and we'll go back to Brian. So this was on the post office, and on the very end, somebody had wrote on it. Because, you know, when you, when you say something to somebody and they're like, well, what about this person? And they start pointing fingers. And so everybody's always after Guy Barris. And so I talked to Guy Barris today and I says, hey, do you think you could do something about the right of way along the yard? And he agreed to. So I asked him, can we make something happen by the end of the month? He said, yes. So we're working with Guy, and he's, he's agreed to help get this cleaned up. And I went and visited Kit, because they're the two people that everybody complains about. And so today I just visited with Kit, and it's gonna take a little time, but I think he'll, we'll be able to work with them too. So I'm happy to work with people and donate my time to help do these things. So sometimes we've just gotta do what we gotta do and try to be patient. Kit's got this whole group of problems, but we'll try to be patient.
Do we have an ordinance dealing with car lots in town?
Nope.
Not your place. I'm talking about across from my place, that car lot.
We're working on it. Which means cars along the road on the right ways and being not. Which means cars along the road on the right of ways and being not registered. So like Guy or Kit, if they, if they have, or myself even, if there's cars on the right of way and not registered, we're going to ask people to put them on the property.
What about those logs you got out front?
Those are on my property, they're not on the right of way.
Oh, because if you don't want them, you can throw them over to my yard.
I do that. Well, I've got a skister that might be hard for you to pick up once it's stepped off. Okay, Brian, can we listen to your report?
Yeah, things have been going pretty good. I just recently had the 10 horse pump that we recently got running again. That it needed to be rebuilt. It sat long enough. It needed new bearings. It had some broken seals in it. So I got it fixed. It's back in place, and it is running like a drink. It runs so smooth.
Quiet.
Yeah, it's, it's quieter than the 30 horse pump. It's doing well. The lagoons are doing well. We dropped another inch since the last meeting. The cooler weather is slowing it down a bit, but it is still maintaining everything we're, we're dumping. We're, we're still pumping it out between 24 and 36,000 gallons of sewage into those ponds a day. And I, it seems like a lot, but like I said before, you divide that amongst 159 attachments, that's not really that much. But those ponds are taking it and they're, they're staying, staying the course. We've got some more pump work that probably needs to be done. I just got tires on the old red truck. I'm getting her going again, and you'll probably see it driving around, trying to get it back in service. Some new tires for the, for the plow. That'll happen next week. I am working on the, I am rebuilding the snowplow. I know it's, it's September, nobody wants to hear about that. That's probably why we have a cold snap here, is I've got the snowplow torn apart. And I'm, I'm going to rebuild it. It was, I did some figuring, and it was going to be cheaper with my time and materials to rebuild it again than to try and find a new one, so in the process of rebuilding. That being said, in the right of ways, keep in mind that snow will come. And when the snow comes, the further off the road that we can plow snow, the better the roads are. So that means right of ways should be, anybody that's listening, it's recorded, you might start thinking about where you're going to put stuff off of the right of ways to make it easier to plow.
If you come across anybody that has a problem moving something, I'm happy to come and help move stuff.
And there may be a few. I, I say, we do have another, you know, right of way issues that we're going to talk about in other meetings, but just as a friendly reminder, snows are coming.
Sooner is better. You got sleds, Brian. Hey, anything else?
Oh, yeah. No, he's just here to hang out.
He's popping. He said he read there was pie.
I did not know there was pie. I don't really have much. Has to be a run, a five point analysis on the water system. I don't really have much to share on that, but I can kind of show you that after the meeting. Let's see that, but just keeping in our thoughts. If you need it.
I guess that concludes our meeting, and we want to say again, thanks, Kay, for your time. These pies are for you, so when you're ready to go home, if you want to take one or two with you, we'll send them home with you.
And you're always welcome to come join us.
I motion to adjourn.
On paper? Okay, well, thanks.